...and saves those who are crushed in spirit. Many are the afflictions of the righteous, but the Lord delivers him out of them all. Well, Lord our God, we thank you tonight for this Commissioners' Court and this time that we give to recognize your significance to our affairs. We pray tonight for our ears to hear and eyes to see the needs of our county and the wisdom to meet them with justice and prudence. Lord, we ask you to enable this court to make decisions that will stand the test of time and cause your favor to be upon us. In the name of our Savior, we pray. Amen.
Dr. Gawain, Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, and one entity.
Thank you.
I'm getting right, tears. Yeah, me too. But I'm getting dirty looks over here.
Item number one, public comments. I have, uh, I've received one notice of a public comment by Mr. Cifuentes.
Good afternoon, county judge, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Francisco Cifuentes. I'm a county resident for the past twenty-four, twenty-five years. I come before you, uh, to ask that we continue working together. I have seen county representatives at the Port of Brownsville. I have been asking year after year after year, for many years, that, uh, we work together with the city, the Port of Brownsville, the university, all of us working together, not duplicating services. And most important, uh, the past time there was some storms and flooding coming in, I know that you did answer the call. Most of you in County Commissioners' Court did answer the call of the citizens of this county. Uh, however, the city failed greatly to the citizens of Brownsville. And, uh, that's one issue that we're gonna continue working on. And, uh, I want to urge the City Commissioners' Court, as the main body of the county, to contact all of the law enforcement, law enforcement agencies under your control, and I'm just talking Cameron County, that, uh, the officers refrain as much as possible from using their cell phones. Lately, uh, we have seen so many officers on the phone constantly, if they're using it for getting information that's perfect, but if they're using it for personal reasons, they should not. It is very dangerous, they're not paying attention, and they're not really doing their job a hundred percent. Also, I'm gonna address the city of Brownsville because I was talking to some individuals, some friends of mine, and they have noticed the same thing. A lot of people are on the phone, a lot of officers, some counties have banned the use of phone while you're driving, it's very dangerous. So I will urge you to contact the heads of departments and to try to, uh, to minimize as much as possible because liability falls with the county if something happens while they're using the phone. And I wanna thank you, I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas, all of you and all of the employees of the county. It has been a great year for this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cifuentes. Anybody else wish to make a public comment that did not sign up?
Judge, I just wanna show this.
Oh, yes, Commissioner.
I promised, I promised, uh, the Family Learning Center from La Feria, the important names here are not mine, they're the outreach specialists, and especially all the names written all the way around this frame, which are the children that attend that center. And we have a waiting list. So I told them I'd show it this evening, and hopefully the little ones aren't staying up to watch this. I'm thirsty, but I'm doing what I told them I would do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item two, presentation by Dr. Rose Gawain regarding the Cameron County Wellness Report.
I'd like to thank Judge Coscos and the commissioners for having us tonight. I'd like to acknowledge, um, Dr. Joseph McCormick with me tonight from the Dean of the School of Public Health. And with that, I think you can see on your monitors, can you?
Yes.
Um, what we're gonna talk about tonight is the health of Cameron County and how it's much more than health, but much, much a greater portion of our economy than we may have thought in the past. I am a private practitioner. I'm also the medical director of the Clinical Research Unit, UT Houston, South Health Science Center, School of Public Health here in Brownsville. And as many of you know, I was born and raised here in Brownsville. When the RAC came to South Texas, Brownsville was awarded the UT Houston Health Science Center School of Public Health portion. RAC, as we know, stands for the Regional Area Health Science Center. And Harlingen, for example, received a medical school, which is a division of UT San Antonio. We are housed on the UTB campus, right down the road. And the goal or mission of the School of Public Health when they began here was to identify and delineate the unique risks of life in the Lower Rio Grande Valley using careful study and scientific methods, and by establishing a clinical research unit, which we call the Hispanic Health Research Center, or we abbreviate HHRC. Many people ask, well, why, why should we identify risks? Well, public health by definition is about identifying risks so that communities and government leaders can act to protect. Is Cameron County at risk? That's what we're gonna look at tonight. And we must consider these facts. The Census Bureau says that in the next twenty years, the Mexican-American population will double in the United States. Cameron County's eighty-four percent Hispanic, and Brownsville is the largest growing city in the Lower Rio Grande Valley. Cameron County's among the poorest areas of the United States, yet it is also among the fastest growing in the United States. The HHRC began by looking at the risk of diabetes. And we might remember that the reason we did that was because Hispanics have a genetic tendency towards diabetes, and we've seen a seventy-four percent increase in the frequency of diabetes in the Lower Rio Grande Valley in the last twenty years in people over the age of twenty-five. So we began with a team of interviewers and research nurses that canvassed Brownsville, inviting people to participate. Which people they asked to participate was all very scientifically established, computer-generated in different quartiles throughout Brownsville, not all poor people and not all wealthy people, if you will. Brownsville residents were interviewed and evaluated and now make up the largest Hispanic cohort in the country, and that cohort or group of citizens numbers seventeen-hundred at this time. This is our team, our research nurses, myself at the bottom, Anne Renfro, and other faces that I'm, I'm sure you recognize from around town. Well, what did we find out? Well, first, we have to recall the association between diabetes and obesity. Insulin from our pancreas breaks down the food that we eat, and the heavier we get, the harder it is for our insulin to work, and that is also made much more difficult if we're not active. If those things happen together, then diabetes develops. And this is a look at our preliminary data, and the highlighted boxes, just to keep you focused. Obese rates, this column of Cameron County, this column nationally. So obese rates are fifty-two point two percent in Cameron County. Nationally, Mexican-Americans have a thirty-six percent rate of obesity. There's an extreme obesity of nine additional percent in Cameron County, whereas nationally there's only four point five percent. If we look here at the undiagnosed diabetes, in other words, these are people who did not know they were diabetic before they joined the cohort, fifteen percent, whereas nationally only ten percent of people have undiagnosed diabetes, and our total rate of nineteen point four percent of diabetes in Cameron County compared to the nation Mexican-American population of only thirteen percent. The most frightening in many ways is this column at the bottom, pre-diabetes. This is what my grandmother called borderline diabetes, people that are a little diabetic, so if you will. Twenty-two percent in his, in, um, Cameron County, whereas nationally it's higher. In other words, we have more outright diabetics than we do borderline, but we have a lot more diabetics than on the nation. In color, we see the purple bars based on age groups versus the percent of diabetes, of obesity, purple being us in Cameron County, blue being national averages. Across the board, in every age group, we are more obese than Mexican-Americans in the rest of the country. Anne Renfro has done some very great work in our adolescent populations in high schools in Brownsville, and she has found a twenty-seven percent rate of adolescent obesity compared to only sixteen percent of Mexican-American adolescents in the country. This slide didn't project, but it's a slide showing where in our age groups we become obese. Both men and women become obese early on, in their late twenties. However, men have a spike that spikes up and then decreases back to normal in their midlife. Women do a little bit of the opposite. We spike with the men, but then continue to raise our obese levels until the end. So we don't have that drop that men do. The diabetics in Cameron County are also very, very poorly controlled, and this slide showed the national hemoglobin A1C, hemoglobin A1C being the long-term measure of diabetes control, being about two points higher than the, uh, lower rather nationally than the rate here in Cameron County. So our diabetics are larger in number and more poorly controlled. So in summary, we are more obese than we are overweight. We become obese at a younger age, and this is especially true for our young males. We have diabetes more commonly than Mexican-Americans anyplace else in the country. Nearly half of us with diabetes are not on medication. And, and another risk that's been identified by the School of Public Health is that if you are looking at diabetes, tuberculosis risk, which we know is endemic in Mexico, diabetes is the single most important risk factor for developing tuberculosis along the Texas-Mexico border. But let's remember that diabetes never travels alone. We know that diabetics are at greater risk as well for heart disease, stroke, hypertension, poor wound healing, immunosuppression, Alzheimer's, senility, and many others that didn't fit on the slide. We should know that diabetes may in fact be the single most important health problem among Mexican-Americans, particularly along the Mexican-American border, where we have such high health disparities. So we've talked about the, I've talked about the health, but let's ask the question, is this just health? And I would challenge you to say, to look at the economy of this. Let's think about the fact that sick and disabled people don't work, they don't earn money, they don't pay taxes, they don't have health insurance, and they don't buy goods that drive the economy in Cameron County. If we look at the health of our population in the valley compared to those in the United States, we look, we see that the per capita income nationally is about twenty-five thousand dollars, but in the valley is much lower at twelve thousand. Looking at obesity costs, and there really are experts that look at this type of thing, on the nation, costs ninety-nine billion dollars, but in the, in the valley alone is six-hundred-and-two million dollars. Cost per case is the same nationally as in the valley, meaning it costs the same to take care of obesity in the nation compared to the valley, but percent cost per capita per year is much higher. Nationally, it's only one point four percent, but in the valley, it takes five point four percent. If we look at the similar relationship, but now with diabetes costs of being a hundred and thirty-two billion in the nation and eight-hundred-and-ninety-two million in the valley, cost per case again is the same, but now the percent cost per capita is even more dramatic, at seven percent compared to only one point four percent on a national level. We should ask about the hospitals. Who's taking care of these people? And we know that the citizens of Cameron County who are uninsured and without resources receive assistance from Cameron County Indigent Fund. And if I asked Valley Baptist, only one of the hospitals in Brownsville, what were their charges to the Cameron County Indigent Fund in the last year? The answer, which unfortunately doesn't project very well, is one point six-two million dollars. Now, that's only for people who were admitted with the first diagnosis of diabetes. So if you were admitted for a heart attack and you had high blood pressure and you also had diabetes, that number does not reflect you, only reflects the number of people who were admitted first with diabetes. So you might imagine that number is very, very low to the true cost of charges that you Cameron County government received for indigent care. So I ask again, is this just a health issue? And I think you'd have to answer no. Let me give you a couple of examples of Cameron County residents. Socorro, and that's not her real name, began seeing me when she was about thirteen. At that time, she was forty-five pounds overweight. She's now a teacher's aide, she's twenty-six years old, and she's a hundred and fifty pounds overweight. She's now a borderline diabetic. When asked if she exercised, she said that she was embarrassed to exercise at the gym with thin people. Her mother and her two sisters are also obese and do not exercise. Soon, Socorro will be frankly diabetic. She recently married and wants to have children, and this poses enormous risk to her and her infant. So I ask you, what can Cameron County do for her? Jaime is another example, again, that's not his real name. He's a thirty-year-old Mexican-American man who's a construction worker and who's fifty pounds overweight. He has diabetes and high blood pressure for the past three years. When I asked him whether he exercised, he responded, "I work." When I asked him again, he said, "Well, I already have diabetes and high blood pressure." Jaime's father also has diabetes and high blood pressure. He's been on dialysis since he was forty-five, he's lost three toes, and he's been unable to work since the age of forty. What can Cameron County do for Jaime? I use these two samples because this is not a disease or a problem for them or for the indigent, but for everyone in Cameron County. These people are employed and have health insurance, and Jaime's tone needs to change to one of Tu Salud Secuentas. In fact, Tu Salud Secuentas is the name of the outreach program that the School of Public Health has designed to speak to all of us in Cameron County and to the people on the Mexican border. It is a community-based media campaign to improve physical activity and healthy food choices to prevent obesity. It has many media partners that you see here. And these are the examples of people that did listen to Tu Salud Secuentas, like Ernie here that now rides his bike and states that he's learned a great deal of things and is now much more motivated. Or Lou Salie, who lives in Cameron Park, who enjoys hearing about the role models and sees that as motivation to her and her family. So the Cameron County Hispanic cohort here feeds back to Tu Salud Secuentas, generates research and information, and also feeds back into parent interventional trials like the Catch program throughout the third grade in the ISD. And all of that feeds back again to help improve the health of us in Cameron County. So I say, what can Cameron County leaders do? Well, you can speak, you can support and create, and you can innovate. Speak about healthy eating and exercise often. Set an example for the people of Cameron County who elected you. Support and create. Participate in the creation of a farmer's market that can be certified by the state to allow the use of WIC to pay for healthy, fresh fruits and vegetables. And encourage design and design incentives for Cameron County farmers to participate in such a farmer's market. Design and create safe parks that are well-lit to allow activities for both children and adults. Design and sponsor neighborhood walks on a regular basis with coaches to rally the people. And maybe even consider creating a wellness program for the employees of Cameron County. I believe you employ twenty-two hundred people, and according to our findings, one in five are diabetic. Innovate. Improve zoning for better and more parks and activity areas. Begin outreach initiatives and begin incentives for business owners to begin wellness programs of their own. And we will continue coming to you with our findings and progress because you are our government. What happens if we do nothing? Well, diabetes has doubled over the last twenty years here. Ten years from now, our rates will grow to twenty-five percent frank diabetes and twenty-five percent pre-diabetes. That's fifty percent of our population. That does not include the other diseases that go along with diabetes. Ten years from now, if we do nothing, the obesity rates will grow from fifty-three percent to sixty-five percent. Diabetes and pre-diabetes and obesity and all of these things that will rise will be seen in a significantly number of young people, and this will place an enormous burden on the workforce of Cameron County that we've never seen before. If we do nothing, will you have enough money to provide for the indigent in Cameron County who need health care? Will, what will the economy in Cameron County look like in ten years? Together, we have to think of outside the box. Focus on Cameron County on healthy eating and regular exercise, make it priority number one because nuestra salud se cuenta. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gawain. Um, the importance of this presentation, I got a chance to see probably most of this when, when we visited a few weeks ago, and it was important enough and quite frankly scary enough to, to bring it to, to the rest of the court and obviously the, the general public. Um, I think everybody on this court is supportive. I will tell you that, that the, the four commissioners here have been very, very active and instrumental in, in continuing to promote our park system, building community pocket parks throughout the, throughout the county, which, which is great. Uh, but I think that the, the most difficult, the most difficult thing to do here is just sending out the message and educating folks, and, and I think this is, this hopefully sends, sends a, a clear message now. Uh, but you know, everybody on this court has a different, you know, opinion. I think they're all favorable and they all have different ideas, and I would like to have maybe members of the court share, uh, what they believe, uh, you know, we as a, as a commission can do, you know, for this. So anywhere you'd like to start, Commissioner Tamayo would like to start.
Yes, Dr. McCormick, welcome. And, uh, I would like to, I would like to tell you that, well, and the whole group that's here today, uh, I wanna let you know that your cohort, Paul Toscano, who runs your telemedicine mobile unit on two-eight-one, uh, called me last week, extremely concerned about our population and that they need exercise. He's trying his best to, to help them with, with a healthy menu for their, for their families and so on. And he was asking me if I could contact the school district to leave the gates open because the people told them they had nowhere to, to exercise, to walk. Uh, we have a park going up, as, as the judge just said, in La Paloma and across, across our, our county actually, uh, and it's a twenty-acre park, and Javier Mendez is here. We're, we're going to have walking trails all around that park, but that's like six or seven months away. So I'm gonna be contacting the school district. I don't know if it's possible for them to do it. I know that there's a liability risk in them leaving the gates open so people walk in, uh, on, on the grounds. Uh, but Paul Toscano, it was a tremendous choice that UT Health Science Center in Houston chose for, to head that, uh, to be the head of our, of our mobile unit there. And he's extremely concerned about, about this. But yes, we, we have to take part. I believe that this court has been very strong in thinking out of the box. The partnership we have with, with UT Health Science Center in Houston is, is a prime example. That mobile unit is being used to capacity. And, uh, it's on two-eight-one, and yes, there is a problem, and, and that staff is very much aware of it.
Dr. Gawain, thank you for coming forward today. I think many of you know that I lost my husband last October, and it was, uh, his death was probably prompted, prompted by the fact that he had been a diabetic for over fifteen years. During his term, Benavides Park, or the Brownie Park, uh, was constructed, and it has, uh, walking trails. Recently, we've had a new director at our multi-service center there across the street from the park, and we have had a health fair. We had someone from Valley Baptist come, and, uh, we had a very good turnout. This area is rather remote, and a lot of the community members are not able to come into town. So, uh, part of it was to take a health fair out there to them. We have aerobic classes, we have nutritional classes, and I really appreciate your coming and, um, you know, until you're touched by diabetes, you really don't know what you're up against. So, um, I think, I thank you for making this, uh, body more aware of what we, we know that we are facing. Thank you very much.
Dr. Gawain, I, I think what we're all saying, and what you're saying, is build it and they will come. Commissioner Tamayo's saying they're going to have a walking trail. Commissioner Benavides talked about the walking trail in, in her area. Uh, there was a walking trail put at Cameron Park a couple of years ago, and it's continually used by the public, by the people who live in that community and that area. And so many of your studies have been done there, and, and with, with good success, and we appreciate those studies because it does represent a, a portion of the community that you're targeting and we're all targeting. The new seven-mile trail from downtown out to the Palo Alto Battlefield that the city just opened up recently, people are starting to use that and exercise more. It's a safe, easy, convenient way for people to exercise and to get around and to, to better themselves and improve their health issues. I, I certainly appreciate everything that y'all do. We're, we're trying to help and to work on things to make it better for people. Uh, as Commissioner Benavides indicated, the programs that are in the Brownie Road Service Center are kind of takeoffs from what's been going on in Cameron Park for a long time. And I know Commissioner Tamayo has these types of programs in her precinct at her learning centers and all. Health, education, wellness, nutrition, all those things are extremely important, and we certainly support it and appreciate all of your help in getting the word out to it. Thank you.
I, I think we would agree that those are wonderful programs. We just need about ten thousand more of them.
More, yes.
Linear Park is awesome, but for a town this size, it's very small when you consider, if everyone were to go out and use it, it, you wouldn't be able to walk or ride your bike at all. So what we're saying is that more is needed. Um, and we're also saying, don't think of it in terms of health, but think of it in terms of economy, because sometimes that draws different attention in your budget meetings. Also, media campaigns, it's great to have the programs, but if people don't know they're there, then they won't show up. Um, and partnering with the School of Public Health and City of Brownsville, we're gonna take this presentation hopefully to the city and to the ISD, as you mentioned, and as many other people as we can. But the county hopefully will work together with all of these to, to make it a reality.
Commissioner Carson?
I would just like to comment a little bit on the different partners out there that somehow don't seem to all come together at one time or another. I know that Cameron County has the Extension Services, an example, that has a great program, a great exercise program, and a great expanded nutrition program in which they have individuals, and I know that they've been providing that particular program at Cameron Park on a regular basis with close-knit groups, and teaching them the different food values and the different things that they should include and exclude from their diets, and having very good success. I know there is an initiative that was started in the state of Texas about three years ago through the Extension Service, Texas A&amp;M University Extension Service. And Starr County is one of, a few counties on the border that has an agent totally responsible for wellness and diabetic training in that community, and that individual was at Cameron Park about a month ago. So I saw her coming out of the building in San Benito, and I asked her where she's headed, and she says, "I'm going to Cameron Park to do this presentation." I know that Sue Clinica does the same thing in, in Harlingen. They have extensive programs for the folks there. There's, there's a whole lot of outreach that occurs in many different programs, but there's no coordinated effort countywide to make them happen, you know, and, and, you know, I would, you're doing great. And you know, I would, you're doing great. It is fantastic that all these numbers are being brought forth and that we're all learning because, you know, I mean, I'm a pharmacist, and I can tell you that awareness is the only solution to that problem. If people don't take responsibility for their own illness, they're not going to get well. Diabetes, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, is a very slow progressing disease in most cases. So people don't think there's a big urgency to make the changes necessary to take care of themselves. I've done many programs with nurses where I do CE for them, you know, and I usually take two different individuals that in the course of the last 20-some years in practicing pharmacy have done well managing diabetes, too. Okay? I mean, there's actually some people that can manage and have managed their diabetes. And they will sit before you and they will profess to a group saying, you know, "I walk four miles every day. I go to my foot doctor every six months. I go to my eye doctor every six months. I go to my regular doctor every 90 days whether I need to or not." You know, and they have their program set in managing the disease. And it's interesting to note that some of these folks were in bad shape when they found out they had the diabetes, have managed to grow to be people of 70-plus, 80-years in one case, and they're healthier than most of us are, you know? Which simply says that if people take responsibility for their health, take care of themselves, and learn about the disease, in most cases, they can tell you what they need as a doctor, you know? I mean, that's what I found out. And, you know, I have, I have taken it upon myself in some cases with individuals to just become interested in their disease state and try to make a difference with them on a one-to-one basis, you know, just as you do, I'm sure.
Sure, and I agree-
But the problem is the big numbers.
Right. And I agree with the issue of coordination, you're right. And that's why we came to you first, because you are-
Yeah, how can we-
-Cameron County. So we're hoping that maybe you consider a committee or a whatever to spearhead that coordination and mobilize all of those people to focus.
Yes, and we've had one individual that has, that has come to us from the governor's office in regards to doing some of that. And of course, she was in the PPAG, you know, the group that gives out free medication to people that don't qualify for anything, to utilize that program. So that, you know, Lilly and Squibb and Novartis all have programs available for folks. They have meters available for folks. They have testing materials available for folks. It's just a matter of connecting the people to the program.
Yes.
And, you know, I mean, I leave myself open and ask you if there's anything that we could, that I could do to help coordinate some of these groups. You know, the help is out there. It's just a matter of mashing it.
I think so. Our Department of Health, I was going to mention the fact that, I know that we need a lot more programs, but I think the main thing that's happening here, and like Commissioner Garcia brought it out, there's a lack of communication. There's a lot of people doing a lot of things, and you don't know about it, and they don't necessarily know what you're doing. And I was going to use the example, and I know they've been to Cameron Park through the Department of Health that oversee the family learning centers. Just last Thursday, when I was at the La Feria Family Learning Center and all the parents were there, they were telling me how the children go home and lecture to them about the units that are being taught at the centers on nutrition and so on. And so all of these things are happening all over the county, but you don't know about it. But it's true, if we just coordinate a little better, maybe, maybe we can do a better job. But this is happening, and I give credit, I don't know if the Department of, any representatives from that department are here, but they're doing a tremendous job taking those units all over my precinct, and I'm sure they go everywhere else also. And coming from the parents, you know it's happening, because they were kind of joking. They said they lectured to us about, you know, their eating habits. So I know that a lot of times we say we have to reach the parent in order to reach the children. Well, sometimes it works just the opposite. You reach the children, and you're going to reach the parents through the children if you make a strong enough impact on them.
Let me just say that the fact remains that diabetes has doubled in the last 20 years. And it doesn't seem to be slowing down. So all of these programs are important, they're laudable, but the existence of diabetes is costing the Lower Rio Grande Valley about $800 million a year. In other words, when these people have to go see their foot doctor and the other people, that's costing a lot of money that can go elsewhere. So we applaud all of these, and we want to work with you and with all of these programs, but they're not nearly enough, and particularly for when we get to prevention. What we're trying to do is keep these people from getting to the point where they have to go to their foot doctor every six months and go to their cardiologist every three months and so on and so forth. That's the crux of the matter, and that means working with schools, with businesses, with government, and really trying to think more broadly and perhaps more deeply about the kinds of programs. I can tell you that the investment is cost-effective. We know it will be. And it will produce more productive people. It also means that our children will learn better. It's now very clear that when children are healthy, when they're not obese, when they're healthy and active, they learn a lot better. And we know that education is a big issue in this, that's one of the reasons our economy is the way it is. We have relatively poor education levels. So all of these things are affected by the health of our population. So we need to do more, we need to pay more attention to the prevention side and working with all of these entities. And I think Dr. Gowin is right. If we can join with you in a committee or some kind of task force that would be able to start to pull those programs that are effective together and to increase all of what we are all doing, then it will be a good investment in our, in our community.
Doctor, I think that, well, thank you for your presentation and for the knowledge. And it's unfortunate that we have to hear this kind of grim news right before we start eating our holiday food and stuff.
Maybe that's what-
You're not going to discourage me, at least, I'll start after the holidays. But I think it's important to note, we're not telling people not to eat tamales and stuff, but just eat it in moderation. Don't have three dozen, you know, have three or four, like I do, you know. But I think it's important that-
Yeah, what does that judge you?
That I have three or four dozen, very, very easy. But I think it's important to note that this is a, and the reason that, I think when we spoke, when you were by, I said, you know, "You need to go by, not only make the presentation to us, you make it to the school district, the cities, chambers of commerce, Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs," because this is the only way that this word is going to get out. Once we do that, then I think we need to develop a mechanism whereby it doesn't stop there. I think, you know, we talked about a farmer's market, and I think that we do need to set up a task force made up not just of, you know, some of us here. I mean, it's got to be really regional. It's got to be at a minimum countywide where we have maybe two representatives from each city, be it from the school district or whatever, and really do, and then have, and I'd like to put you all kind of in charge of that, you know, develop, you know, let us know what you need from us. Let us know, you know what, we want to put together an 11-member task force or 21-member task force. And obviously, the larger the membership, the more difficult it is to get things done. So keep that in mind. But I think it's important to bring Harlingen, San Benito, you know, and, you know, people, leaders in the community. And I tell you, our best source of talent is really coming from the school districts. And personally, because they're the ones that, as Commissioner Tamayo mentioned, that these are the ones that educate our young kids that go and talk about recycling, or they talk about healthy foods, or they talk about, you know, "Don't get that Coke, it's got, you know, four teaspoons or tablespoons of sugar." It's that, and that's what we have to do. I think Commissioner Wood mentioned all the folks that are walking on these trails. But I think you're going to find it the same people that have always walked. We're not getting a new inventory of people. You're not getting the new people out there to walk. It's the same ones that just found another place to walk that's more convenient for them or whatever. So we really do need to reach out and get the people that are either slightly overweight, thin, overweight, everybody, and do some kind of a national, I mean, a countywide walkathon, so to speak, to bring public awareness to this. But I commend you for this. I think that the next step would be, after maybe you run all your traps with all the entities, is to come back, you know, call me or any member of the court and say, "Okay, we're ready, this is what we want to do," and then we'll work towards that. I know that Manuel Villalde was here a few minutes ago. He is, "The county's developed a wellness program." So, you know, we've done a lot of things within our small community in terms of our employees to encourage them to, you know, eat well, sleep well, work hard, and things like that. We just need to take it to a different level. So I would encourage you, once you have that thought in mind, you know, contact any one of us here, and then we'll work with our human resources department, and then maybe we start working with other entities that way. That's the only way that this is going to work. And we're not going to see effects or the effects immediately. There's going to be long-range effects. I mean, there's going to be long-range plan. That's the thing, I don't want to be discouraged, "Well, in one year, we've only gone down two tenths of a percent." It's going to take five, seven, 10 years before we really start seeing a significant impact and reduction of the programs that we're all going to participate and implement.
Do you happen to have any research as to, and I'm showing my ignorance here, why is it that our population down here, as far as the Mexican-American population, has a higher rate than other parts of the country?
A higher rate of diabetes?
Of diabetes. I believe, I believe you made that statement.
We're trying to, we have a huge body of information on these, on this randomly selected cohort that Dr. Gowin presented. We're in the middle, this is really our first initial analysis of this, but it was so startling to us, we felt absolutely compelled to begin to share this with our community because it's really important. But we have within that also a lot of information that may help us to understand whether there are behavioral issues, whether there are genetic issues. We actually have data to look at the genetics of this. We have a lot of information we're going to be looking at and trying to understand why this may be the case, but we don't really know for sure for now.
Well, I'm going to give you a scenario here that, I realize that Mexican-American population has the highest rate, but out of five cheerleaders, and way back when, when I was in high school, we had a class reunion, I'm the Mexican-American in the group, the others are Anglo. All the other four are diabetic, and I'm not, thank God. So we threw that out the window with just this small percentage here. But I know that that research is correct. The Mexican-American population has a high rate. I'm just lucky, I guess.
Thank you very much, and we will be back.
I think, I think that I would suggest that you add one more slide to your presentation, and that is the cost of an amputation, the cost of being on dialysis on a year-round basis, the cost of being taken to and from, especially when an ambulance is required for a patient, which can run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars per year.
That's why we're talking about $800 million, just the cost of diabetes in the valley, because of the very high rates and the cost. That's precisely what that includes all of them.
You know, the number one cost of blindness, you know, in adults, you know, and just add some of those startling figures, you know, so that I think it kind of helps open our eyes up.
Right. I will leave your, the CD in the computer, so if you want to share this information-
Rose, oh, okay, I was going to ask if you could do that, so, or provide, so that we can provide hard copies to members of the court, any member of the audience that would like a hard copy of this presentation, just contact either the county clerk or our office so we can get that to everybody.
Thank you, we'll be back.
Thank you so much. Any further comments from anybody? Yes, sir?
Well, this is my first time over here.
Could you please introduce yourself, just for the record? Thank you.
My name is Alberto Isaiere. I am from Leadership, Brownsville, and I came over here today, and I like the presentation that she did, and I like to read. I like to read, and I want to give a little different point of view of the same, of the same, of the same, of what she was talking about. And what I noticed with this kind of problems, with Hispanics, we tend to, because we don't have an education on eating. Also, I noticed that there is a lot of problem with the fast food. What we are going to do to prevent to eat the fast food, because that's part of the problem. So if we don't control that, in seven years, it's going to be the same thing or worse. So I know, for example, that somebody wants to get millions of dollars from, let's say, McDonald's in the future, they already talk about it. They already talk about it. That's nothing new, you know? That be quiet, like the people that were drinking alcohol, or they were smoking, you know, they got a lot of money from them because they were doing something bad to the community. So, yeah, that's a very important thing to, one of the things is education, but also the fast food industry, that we work, we live, and we, and we, there is a lot of taxes, oh, you know, the drinks, also the drinks. So we need to change on that. Most of the times, people that are coming from, to this country, this country has been growing too fast, but also is, I think, is very, is not advanced in eating, in eating habits. Like the Greeks, the Greeks are one of the best foods, one of the best food in the world. Why? Because they eat a lot of salad, they eat a different kind. In China, they eat a lot of fish. They have a different habit. So like they say, when someone, companies move to China, people start getting more fat. They notice that they start getting more fat because the time, the time concern, sometimes people need to eat in 30 minutes. So they are, they are-
Hurry.
Yeah. They need to, so they are providing that kind of service to those kind of people, you know? But we need to be, we need to know that we, where we are going, having that kind of habit, you know? So it's not going to change a lot of things if we don't get together. I like what I hear from you and from Dr. Gowin, and I think, yeah, that's the only, that's the only thing that we need to do, you know? Get together and make decisions and also, but work on that in every, every, every way we can, you know? Meeting together and, you know, they are, really, they are the experts in this area.
Well, thank you very much. And there's not a whole lot that we can do about the fast food business, but we can begin to educate our population, and thank you for your comments. Anything else from anybody? Thank you. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Dr. Gowin's presentation? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item three, consideration of adoption of a resolution to improve water quality in the terrestrial, terrestrial, repairing and aquatic habitat of the Royal Colorado watershed. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution? Moved by Commissioner Garcia, signed by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item, item carries. Item four, presentation of the auto theft detail regarding the current auto theft program on national bridges. I ask that this item be tabled. There appears to be some concern as to whether there may be some departmental policies that are being violated. So I would ask that this item be tabled. I will put this item back on probably after the new year to discuss the bridge detail, but for now, I ask that this item be tabled.
Move table.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, signed by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item five, consideration, approval of a resolution authorizing and approving the construction and rehabilitation of flood control levees with respect to alternative approaches for securing the United States-Mexico border. This was a resolution that was adopted by the City of Brownsville. It's very similar to what we've already adopted, it just kind of goes a little bit more detail. The City of Brownsville would like for us to approve this, to join them in this resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Wood, signed by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion?
Just a clarification, that was County Avila.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was, I thought it was the-
This is JD's.
Okay, all right. Excuse me, JD, that was City of Brownsville. Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item six-
I think it would be important to at least highlight the fact that this resolution encourages the improvement of the levee system with the process of building a border wall if that is going to take place.
Yeah, as we know, there's a couple of public hearings, one going on today in McAllen, the other one going on tomorrow at the event center. So anybody that wants to participate in that dialogue, welcome you all to attend. They will be taking public comments, as I understand, so encourage everyone to be there if they can. I think it believes starts- I think it's believed starts at 4:30? Okay. All right, item six, consideration and approval of a resolution urging congressional enactment of a freeze on current subprime mortgage interest rates and a moratorium on home foreclosures to prevent many homeowners throughout Cameron County and the rest of the nation from losing their homes, as well as to protect the financial services sector from a potential banking crisis. We have somebody who wanted to address that?
Yes.
Natalie Lovebrand. Natalie?
Natalie visited me about two weeks ago in regards to this, and I gave the information that she provided me to David and Pete, so that they could review and hopefully come up with some kind of resolution. And interestingly enough, last weekend, the Brownsville Herald read a couple of articles in regards to what's happening with the subprime mortgage interest rates and how it's impacting people. And it, you know, it's such a, such a, when you read and try to understand what's going on, it becomes an issue of, you know, the whole financial sector of the United States having problems that they need help with, and I felt it important enough to where we would put it on the agenda and at least support a resolution in trying to help some of the folks that are today having major problems with inflated mortgage payments, all of a sudden, because of their subprime loans that they had, which are escalating and in some cases doubling in cost. So Natalie was, came back from Houston, where she's from, working, and wanted to address us a little on it.
Yes, ma'am.
And she just happened to be a resident.
Makes it all even the better.
Yes.
So the proposal that I'm here to speak on behalf of is actually a proposal for legislation to the US Congress, which was drafted by the economist Lyndon LaRouche, and it's entitled The Homeowners and Bank Protection Act of 2007. What this would do is place a moratorium on all foreclosures nationwide, and for a temporary amount of time, while the housing values are readjusted back to normal, because they have been artificially inflated for several years as this housing bubble was blowing up. So the moratorium would be for this time period, in order that the housing values are readjusted, and in the interim, homeowners would pay something equivalent to a monthly rental payment, that was most likely the original payment that they were paying before the rate arose. And this would protect the homeowners, but it would also protect the banks that are currently being threatened all over the nation and internationally in this housing debacle. You have, almost every major bank nationally and internationally is reporting losses in the multi-millions and billions. USB just yesterday reported a $10 billion loss. This is, we're hearing figures like this from JP Morgan, from Citigroup, from Morgan Stanley, and many international financial institutions that actually became involved in creating a housing bubble in order to prop up a financial system that was already failing.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
And I think this is, this is on target, but just let me, just for my, for my education. This is not a fact, or what's happening right now is not due to the fixed rate, it's due to the, to the variable rates and the, and the ARMs, right?
Exactly.
And that's why this is happening. So the losses that these banks are taking is, are not the ones that have a fixed mortgage interest loan, it's those that have the variable rates that continue to go up, right?
Right.
Okay. And the losses are due to the bad debt, or they, or they, are they due to the foreclosures, and then they're, and then they're selling the homes back at below the loan value? Is that where the losses are occurring?
They're due to the foreclosures, but also with the creation of the secondary mortgage market, where you had mortgage-backed securities, these were securities sold that were backed up by mortgages, these were sold in bundles to hedge funds, to other financial institutions that would just turn them over to where even on the day of closing, your mortgage could be sold to another institution. And people have been reporting that they've had to change whom they pay their monthly payment to a multiple number of times. Now, one of the insane things is that there have been cases, and this is, there have been actually numerous cases, where a bank will go to foreclose on a property, and the judge will say, "I'm sorry, but you're not the owner of this property." And then they'll find out that there's actually multiple owners of the same property, because these mortgages were bundled off and sold multiple times to keep this liquidity...
Well, it's multiple lien holders.
Right. But for the same property, not that they held a share in it, that they actually had full claim on the property, so there's...
So, so let's say if my mortgage was sold, you know, through this cluster, I mean, I'm still the owner of record, but, but there may be a whole bunch of lien holders that are out there.
Right.
All right? Just so I understand how that works.
Now, you said due to foreclosures, were those foreclosures due to what mainly?
Mainly to the interest rates rising, the rate changing.
The people were paying, they didn't stop paying, it's just that...
Well, their payment went up, so someone who entered into an adjustable-rate mortgage, maybe they started out with a $900 monthly payment, and then because the rate changed, they were then faced with a $1,700 rental payment, or monthly mortgage payment that they couldn't afford.
And they weren't able to go to the banker and say, "We need to..."
Right. And in addition to this, you have home equity loans, where people will borrow money on the, based on the equity in their home, and this, because of the rate change in those loans...
Do we have any idea, because we're talking nationwide here?
Yes.
Do we have any idea what this, what the amount of money it would take to do this?
Well, we're not, we're not calling for a bailout, or any, do you mean to, do you, I don't understand the question.
Well, I mean, are we going to, because I've had a lot of phone calls from people concerned, and I'm just as ignorant as they are. This is just asking, this is just asking to freeze the payment at the amount that there were originally...
Yes, well, the...
Is that what this is gonna do?
What the Homeowners and Bank Protection Act calls for is a freeze on foreclosures. So for...
Not on payments?
Right.
But on foreclosures.
Right.
I just wanna make that very clear, because a lot of people are concerned about that. They don't want it to be a bailout for them.
No, that's, that's very important.
And I think that, I think that needs to be reemphasized.
Yes.
That that's what it is. Now, a number four, can you, do you have a copy of this, or Pete, do you have a copy?
No, I didn't give you a copy of the resolution that we put together.
Okay.
But...
Okay. Number four says provide, and, well, Pete can, I think you're the one that put it together, who put this together?
David Garcia.
Oh, David, okay, maybe David can explain.
I put this together based on some of the information I gathered from, from this source, but I also took some of the information from what's going on nationwide, so, in essence, it's...
Yeah, number four is the one I'd like more explanation on. Providing an interim period during which homeowners may not be evicted from their homes in protection to banks pending the resumption of traditional banking functions, including serving local communities and facilitating credit for investment in productive entities. What do we mean by that?
Well, the point here is that we don't want to, we wanna protect the essential functions of the bank. We wanna, we don't wanna protect the ability for financial institutions such as hedge funds to be able to further speculate, to be able to get into the mortgage market, which is, has created the entire problem, to just make money off of the prices going up. So, you would have a time period for the homeowners to have a, they would have the freeze, and they would pay, first of all, you would have a state agency set up that would work with people on an individual basis, determine what they can afford to pay, you know, you would, you would have a real checking of income and so forth, unlike what people went through with these mortgages. And they would determine what they can pay, what is affordable, and make sure that they pay that for the, that given amount of time. Now, this would, this would protect the banking sector, because there's a, there's a big difference between continuing to pay a $900 mortgage payment every month, as opposed to nothing, if the house gets foreclosed on. The bank cannot use that home, they cannot resell it, because the entire bubble has popped now.
Well, I guess I'm old-fashioned, but I think who, initially, when a loan is made, the banker of whom they're financing this should make sure that that person is gonna be able to make the payment.
Sure.
But in this case, I know, I know the scenario that we're dealing with.
The laws were actually changed, the market was deregulated in order that these types of situations...
In order to create what happens.
Right.
As I understand this, you're just asking us to support a resolution and encourage Congress to enact this legislation, correct?
Yes.
It doesn't have any direct impact where, we had, we don't, we have no direct impact on this, it's just asking Congress to do this.
Supporting.
You know, so, I'm sure it's a lot more convoluted than we have here, but by the time they get to that, but the bottom line is that you want, you want people that are, that are in ARMs to be given a break, and other, but the moratorium to stop foreclosing, that means people just stop paying altogether?
No.
Or do they continue with their old payment?
Yes.
And not, okay, well, let me ask you, why, why won't the banks, as part of that enactment, the kind, why can't they force or ask the banks to convert all these adjustable-rate mortgages into fixed rates?
It's a good question. It would seem that the, it would be in the interest of the banks to do that, but apparently there's...
That's really the solution.
Part of that problem is normally the adjustable-rate mortgages were two, sometimes 3% lower than what the fixed rate was at that time, and for banks to freeze it at that, you know, then they're way below the money market. They're losing money. And a lot of it had to do with people who, and we talk about subprime mortgages and subprime market, because people could not afford to get into a regular-priced loan, they went to adjustable-rate mortgages, they could afford to get into it, when those are adjusting, now they can't afford to pay them. Subprime, a lot of them didn't have the credit worthiness to go into regular-type loans, so they were, they were set up by banks and lending institutions, "Okay, I'll give you this rate, which is lower than normal, for a year, two years, five years, whatever it's set up for, and that time, you need to get your credit all fixed up, because the rate's gonna go up later on." And it didn't happen in a lot of cases. And we're talking about the bubble, the price, the value bubbles, and in here, it also talks about adjusting mortgage values to fair prices. I'm not, I'm not really sure what that, I mean, I think I know what that means, but that means that if I originally mortgaged the house...
Banks are gonna take the hit.
For $100,000, now it's really worth 75, if they're gonna adjust that mortgage down to 75, and the banks are gonna take that hit, which then does cause a banking crisis and a possible collapse of a lot of the mortgage industry, as we normally have dealt with it for many years.
The danger is that the, there's already a banking collapse going on at this point. There's already virtual panic in the markets at this point.
Secondary market, yes.
It's unraveling very quickly. This is, this is an emergency measure to, to stop what is already unraveling. If nothing is done, or what the President and Secretary Paulson have proposed, it will continue to unravel.
And we had the unraveling in the 80s with the savings and loans, where values were decreased. In fact, the City of Brownsville and the properties in Brownsville and throughout South Texas and, I guess, probably the rest of the nation, were cut back by the appraisal district. So, you know, you're also looking at the possibility of these values going down on appraised values, which is good for whomever is paying taxes, but it's not necessarily good for the people who have to provide the services based on the taxes they collect. So it's convoluted, as the judge says, it's convoluted, it's very complicated, there are lots of issues in it. Certainly, none of us wanna see people not have their home, but sometimes, if they're just, you know, we're not talking about, you know, doing a moratorium on divorce rates, a lot of home foreclosures are based because of divorces. Going buying a new car, having an extra kid, you know, all these things.
Motion, motion for approval.
Well, I know that last week, President Bush came out with an initiative in regards to this. Unfortunately, that initiative left the majority of the people in this county out.
Yes.
You know? And this is just hopefully saying, "Hey, we're also having a problem here." And, you know, what's good for California and the East Coast needs to be looked at in how it impacts South Texas and the northern part of the US, you know? And, you know, that, that in itself, when all of that was going on, I said, you know, we, we at least need to be a notice of what's going on out there, because it's gonna impact us, you know? The number of homes with for sales on them is increasing daily in Cameron County. We got a report with the statistics, we didn't attach it here, but it's been kinda interesting what's going on.
What we're seeing, I know, looking at the real estate market, every week, the different multiple listing services, we have three in Cameron County, and one in Nodaco County, and every week, there are more homes go on the market for sale than are sold during that week, and the number that's sold during that week, there's about twice as many that reduce their price that week. So the market's filling up with homes that are not selling and are not moving, and it's a problem that realtors are seeing, the community's seeing, the market is seeing, it's a difficult situation. And we, we in our area are fortunate, you know, we think housing is expensive here, but it's not. Housing is extremely affordable in the River and Valley compared to most of the rest of the nation, except the areas that have already crashed and burned, you know, Detroit's crashed and burned already, you can't give house away up there.
Motion for approval, Mr. G.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Ganza. Just one more thing, would this apply to those folks that are current with their mortgages? In other words, the way I'm, the way I'm reading this, that the folks that are behind or delinquent are gonna get the benefit of a moratorium, bring their payments down, get new rates, reduce the values of their property, et cetera. Let's assume we have somebody who's in the same situation, but is able to pay, continue to pay the new higher mortgage. What benefit do they have?
I'm, I believe there would be a provision falling under the, the idea that the housing values would be readjusted back to normal.
So this would only be for anybody that owed money under the adjustable-rate mortgage? So anybody out there throughout this country that has a home that they're current on, it's a fixed rate, their values have gone down, they would not be able to go to the bank and say, "Hey, you know, you did, my neighbor across the street, you reduced his mortgage by 20,000 because the value of my mortgage went down too, are you gonna reduce mine as well?" Is everyone gonna be treated the same?
I'm, I'm actually not sure. I don't know how that would be treated. It's a, it's a good question, though, and a good...
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, I mean, I think it's gotta be fair for everyone, I mean, if someone has the ability to pay, as it's normally done, they're the ones that are getting penalized, because the ones that don't have the ability to pay are the ones that getting, are getting, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know where it's all gonna go.
It's a good concern, I can, I can get back to you on that.
It's all right, you don't have to, I'm just, I'm just curious how, how our congressional leadership is going to approach that, but they've got a long ways to go before they even do this.
Right.
All right, we had a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent and travel items? Is there, are there any items under the consent portion or the travel items that any member of the court wished to take out and address separately? Have an, uh, item 13 to pull out?
That's the one we tabled last week.
Okay.
What is that, Commissioner?
13, the one we tabled, the one we tabled last week and put it back on this week.
Okay. Any other items?
Move to approve the consent items excluding 13 and the travel items, A, B, and C.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ganza. Do I hear a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tomayo to approve consent items seven through 22 with the exception of item 13, having to do with the, um, special prosecutor on behalf of the District Attorney, and travel items 23A through 23C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Show move.
Move by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, to discuss four items. Item A, discuss tax abatement incentives for T-Mobile USA, a company located in Brownsville, Texas pursuant to Code Section 551.087. Item B, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning the leasing of property at the Gateway Bridge pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item C, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots 1A and 1B, Block 122, Brownsville, original town site pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item D, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Sun Guard BiTech Software Support Agreement payments and bill on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.071, 1A and 2.
Judge, one question, please.
Yes, sir.
On item A.
Item A, okay.
The tax abatement incentives. Is this company already open for business in Brownsville?
They're hiring, but I don't think they've started operation yet.
You know, because normally, my experience has been that we see these items come to us before.
Before they start construction.
You know, before they start construction, before they have a facility. I know I've seen, I've received some emails in regards to ribbon cuttings and things of that nature for the facility. This seems to be after the fact that they're coming to us. Um, you know, I mean, if this is the case, any business out there, after we put this item on the agenda, can come to us and say, hey, I want tax incentives.
Unless we're going to discuss it. Unless you want to discuss it out here, that's fine.
No, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean-
That's a good point.
If anybody can come to us now and say, you know, I've been in business for 20 years, why can't I have an incentive, I want to hire 20 new employees?
That's exactly right.
I, I just don't understand why it's an executive session item-
Would you all, can we discuss it in open session, Richard? Or is there a reason that we're having to discuss?
It's not, it's Frank, better honest, Frank?
You want to address it briefly?
I, I don't know the answer.
The, uh, reason it's on executive session, and it doesn't have to be, is because the state statute that deals with public meetings does provide for, uh, discussion in executive session of, uh, development incentives, and, and that's the way it's been handled before. Uh, the reason that I brought it on, if you want to discuss it in public, it's fine with me.
Well, you know, the only thing is, in the past, when we've had a, a tax abatement request, it's usually been brought to our attention without the name of the company, before they make announcements, before they break ground, and we have an interested third party that brings it to us as an outsider for discussion.
This, this item came to the county, I guess Administrator's office, uh, and, and I received a copy of it last Wednesday. Uh, it's basically a request from the city of Brownsville, uh, asking the county to grant tax abatement to this company because the city of Brownsville is, is going to do so. Uh, and what I wanted to discuss with the cap, with the county Commissioner's Court is whether you all want us to proceed with the abatement process. We, we have a twofold problem. First of all, the-
Well, are we going to discuss it in open session?
We can, if you want. I don't care. Doesn't matter to me.
Don't we need to make a motion?
I, I thought that's what you had wanted to do.
I don't know.
You want to do that? It doesn't matter to me. Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't we, we will discuss item A in open session when we come back. So, we're just going to discuss items B, C, and D in, in executive session. We have a motion, a second approval, or an executive session. Now, second by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning the leasing of property at the Gateway Bridge. Do I hear a motion to authorize our county administrator to seek proposals?
Show move.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Ganza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item C, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots 1A, 1B, Block 122. Do I hear a motion to, um, what, direct the county administrator to negoti, continue negotiations?
Go, go out for our, our pay.
No, no, no.
Or to pay the, the appraised value?
To pay the negotiated value.
The negotiated.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Ganza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Sun Guard BiTech Software Support Agreement. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel and instruct him to, what, to follow along the terms and conditions as discussed in executive session?
Show move.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ganza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item 26, budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules?
A.
Yeah, you're right. Well, let me do, let me, have you, you have, let's get that one out of the way. Then we'll go back to item 13 and then item A.
Uh, judging Commissioners, there were some line item transfers and budget amendments included in your packet, and I also left some additional line item transfers in, excuse me, in front of you. The, the ones that are in front of you are just basically general line item transfers that were submitted by various departments. If you have any questions specific to those, um-
Any court member have any questions on the budget amendments, transfers, salary schedules? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let's go back to item 13. Consideration and authorization of contract for Edmund K. Saganowicz, a licensed attorney in the state of Texas, to act as a special prosecutor on behalf of the Cameron County DA's office. Who's here for the DA's office to address that one? Good afternoon.
Good evening. I'm Louis Hawes with the DA's office.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure what questions the court has on this particular item. This is a, um, I have consulted with Mr. Burst on this. This is a, a contract for professional services for, uh, an attorney to represent the DA's office when, basically in times of conflict, whenever there may be a situation where one of our attorneys has represented a defendant or may have some impropriety if, if our office directly dealt with that, with that case.
Just, just out of curiosity, would, would, would it be any type of, uh, security breach or whatever to list the conflict? What the conflict would be in terms, it's John Doe represented so-and-so while they were in private practice, uh, and that is the reason for the hiring of a special prosecutor? This is somewhat kind of boilerplate and generic, so, because a lot of special prosecutors that have been hired over the years, and I've never seen the reason for it. I got, because I think what you, what you mentioned was there may be a conflict, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a conflict in appearance or a, or a conflict in fact. Um, but maybe in the future, what you may all want to consider is telling us what the conflict is, uh, you know, why is there a conflict? You know, did the DA, when he was in private practice, represented so-and-so? Unless that's violating some kind of code of ethics or something, I don't know.
And there, there are times also when a judge will appoint a, an attorney to, to also represent the DA's office or ask for one. But in this case, I don't know that there would be any conflict on, uh, saying, uh, if there was a particular reason. What I understand on this contract, and I don't know the specifics, is just to have Mr. Saganowicz available for ongoing cases in case there is, uh-
Should a conflict arise?
Should one arise, that we have, uh, an agreement with him so that he can be appointed on those cases.
My question is, is this a case where the, the judge would make the appointment still?
Again, I, I'm, unfortunately, I'm not familiar enough with the situations where this occurs.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't seen it. The only instances I know have been where we have an attorney on staff that has represented a defendant in the past and so has to recruit, recuse himself from being on there and that the DA's office doesn't want to give an appearance that there's any undue influence that's given by this, uh, by the attorney on the case. So, they have a special, uh, an attorney specially appointed to prosecute.
Yeah, I just, I have one question after listening. Is this a special prosecutor or an assistant DA?
It's a-
Because, you know, the, this on here, it sounds to me like the functions that you're talking about are functions of an assistant DA.
He functions as an assistant DA, but he is actually a, a special prosecutor. He-
What's the difference?
He's not a regular employee. He's basically just on contract for circumstances in which the DA itself, uh, the DA's office does not want to, uh-
But I think getting paid just for the hours that he works?
Yes, only, well, I, I believe on the contract it-
I'm sorry.
There is a, uh, it depends on, on how far the case goes. If it gets, goes to jury trial, he gets paid an additional amount. If it gets settled or if there's a plea bargain or if it's dismissed beforehand, he gets a certain amount. But it is, it's not an hourly rate per se, but it is a, it's more like a piece rate.
More like a what? I'm sorry.
Like a piece rate if you were doing manufacturing. He gets paid so much if it gets to a certain stage in litigation. If it gets up to, uh, oftentimes a, a defendant will plead before, doesn't have a jury trial. He gets paid a certain amount if it gets to that point. If he has a full jury trial, he'll get paid a different amount.
I still, you know, the question on special prosecutor versus assistant DA, you know? In the, the best recollection I have, when we had special prosecutors, it would be assigned like a specific case only. You know, you would hire a, a special prosecutor to do like this case.
Right.
You know, but in, in the contract that follows this request, there's no spec, I mean, there's many different type of cases that are on there. So, it would seem that he would be working like an assistant DA.
He's available for those particular cases when, wherever we would have potential conflict. We just have him, they just have a, a standing agreement with the attorney so that he knows in advance what he's going to get paid and what his duties will be.
Okay, so it's still, the main focus is when there's a conflict. That's the key word?
That's-
If there's a conflict and then you've got these categories.
Uh, if there's a conflict in the, in the, uh, case itself.
Within those categories that are mentioned.
So, his, his payment is, is based on the categories as, as to how far the case proceeds. I mean, he'll be assigned at the beginning of the case, but at that point, you don't always know how far the litigation will continue. The contract just spells out what his remuneration will be depending on how far that litigation goes.
And the money to pay for the services would come from the county?
Uh-
It would be here, it wouldn't? Is that so?
It's forfeiture funds. Yes.
It specifies where it's coming from.
That, I hate to put you on the spot.
That's all right.
Have you read this?
I have looked over it briefly and, and, uh-
Okay, well, just briefly looking at it, the, the, the attorney's fees are pretty well spelled out in terms of on a, you know, the different cases, how they're doing.
Right.
Uh, there's no, there's no limit on this contract in terms of amounts being paid. This could go on added to an item, basically, because it starts November 1st, and it just goes on until there's 30 days written notice or mutual consent. So, this is going to go on for, you know, for a long period of time, right?
Uh, I believe that is correct.
Okay, and I guess the, in, the issue I would get into, when, when you've got this length of time, when you start going, when, when does that individual stop being an independent contractor and then becomes an employee?
Well, the way this, the salary, or the way the pay structure is set up, uh, and also in the contract, it indicates that he is self-employed attorney as a professional, um, and would not become an employee of the county, but would retain his professional status as an attorney and continue to be self-employed. We would not withhold money.
We can write, you know, the county can write whatever we want, but the IRS rules a little bit different. They don't care what you write, because of certain things, I mean, if we're being, if we're telling him, you're going to do this, you're going to show up here, you're going to do this, and I'm, I'm asking the question, okay? Because I don't want to get saddled later on where he's determined to be an employee. The contract doesn't matter, you can say you're an independent contractor all day long, but if you're functioning and performing the duties that a regular employee would be doing, then you're not an independent contractor. You become a county employee.
He's only going to show up when there's a conflict by one of the current DA employees or the DA himself to do any work. That's the only time they'll be showing up to do work.
And I think, from my understanding of, of the employee, employee, employer, employee relation, it would have to deal with also on how he's directed in his, in his work.
How he's, how he's what?
Directed, if, if, how the DA itself directs the, the work of the-
Are we providing an office for him?
Uh, not, not to my knowledge.
We're not providing anything to him? He's bringing in those, in those laptops, his own, everything. We don't provide any type of ancillary services for him?
That's the way I understand it. He just picks up the file from our office.
I, I'm, I'm, I as one, I don't have a problem with supporting it, but I am a little uncomfortable in the fact that a lot of special prosecutors or assistant, whatever, are being hired, and we really don't know what the conflicts are. If there aren't, here, there may be a conflict. I guess maybe we need to know if, if, I guess if there's no violation of, of law or ethics or something that, that, uh, that someone keep track of, of what the conflicts are. And we're just, I mean, I trust that the DA does. I'm just asking that maybe we just need to find out what these conflicts are. How many special prosecutors per se does a DA employ at this point? Do you know?
Uh, I have only known of, of two or three, uh, myself, if-
Does anybody know, Rob or Javier? Any idea? Any idea how many we, there are?
Okay.
But again, he will be, he will be working under, only when there's a conflict, and that's when he takes those cases.
That is correct.
So, uh, he might go for months without getting paid-
That's correct.
Without a case.
He may not, he may not be employed by our office at any time, and that's the reason for the, the contract, is to have somebody available, uh-
With a fixed fee.
If, if the situation arises and we need to have somebody-
I don't have a problem with that.
All right.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Ganza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item A, discuss tax abatement incentives for T-Mobile USA, a company located in Brownsville, Texas pursuant to Code Section 551.087. This was originally to be discussed in executive session. Um, the court has decided to bring this out and discuss it in open session. And I guess Frank, just to follow up on, on Commissioner's point, if you don't mind me interjecting, Commissioner, I think, I think he's absolutely right. Normally, when these tax abatements, incentives are occurring, we're doing it to lure, to lure businesses in, job creation, et cetera, and then there's certain benchmarks that have to be met, if you remember what, uh, what we've, we've had in the past with other things. So, I guess the question would be, what is Cameron County's incentive to give them a tax abatement if they're already here?
Uh, can, can I interject?
Those are the questions, I think, or part of them, anyway.
Yeah, uh, let me just give you some, uh, some bench.
Okay.
Uh, just, can I proceed?
I'm sorry?
Is Ben Medina here?
No.
No? Well, he requested this item be put on the agenda.
And that's, you know, you're asking me questions that I want to address.
Okay, well, good, that way you'll address them.
Uh-
Good, Frank.
This item came to the county, through the city of Brownsville. It came to my office for review last Wednesday. When I looked at it, I noticed a couple of things. The, the proposal does not comply with current county policy. We would have to revise our policies. Also, the proposal does not conform to past county practice. This request is for abatement on a communication center, and the county has traditionally provided or offered tax abatement for industrial projects.
Frank, let me ask you, just on, when the city gave this tax abatement, was it done after T-Mobile came in, or was this part of the negotiations to bring him in?
All I have is the information in front of you. I've asked-
But have you, I mean, I haven't had a chance to read it, so I mean, do you know when, when that occurred?
Apparently, from the information in front, in front of us, the city had developed an incentives package for the company, and the incentives package included city tax abatement. Whether that package offered county tax abatement or not, I don't know.
No, 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 but did, no, no, I know that, but did it happen prior to-
I, I don't know.
-them coming in, or that was part of the, of the lure to bring him into Brownsville?
Well, the, the, Ben's explanation in his agenda item request indicates that it was part of an incentive package, so I would have to assume that, that that's the offer that was made to the company.
Well, see Frank, we're having to assume a lot of things here.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, the main players should be here.
I asked Mr. Medina to, to be here. I, I emailed him, I faxed him, and I delivered a handwritten request, and, you know, I don't know what to tell you about that.
Probably just because they meet at the same time we meet here. He's probably over there.
Uh, but Mr. Benavides said that the, the city of Brownsville is meeting right now also at the same time, so Mr. Medina is probably there doing whatever he does.
So, T-Mobile should be here.
Well, I, I, I think, you know, I think, I think we have, we have three choices, right? The table, deny, or accept. And I think the, the issue is that it would be important for me to know whether this was part of the deal that, that the city gave T-Mobile to bring him into, into Brownsville. And if that's the case, well, then, you know, that was a deal that they worked out to bring him here. We, I don't know, I wasn't ever notified, or any of you all were notified prior to me coming on board, where that was part of the, part of the negotiation. But let me ask the question first. Is this the first time that y'all hear about this?
Yes, the payment, yeah.
Amazing.
Okay, so, we can assume that, that the Commissioners' Court did not know anything about this when the negotiations were taking place. I have a difficult time giving an abatement to an entity that's already here. You do it to bring them in if you're competing with other parts of the, of the world or the country, but here, it's kind of after the fact, as Commissioner Ganza said, they're here, they're going to create jobs, that's great, God bless them, you know, we wish them well, but I don't know if really, I want to support giving an abatement at this point. What benefit do we get by doing this? After, and that, that's a rhetorical question, I'd like you to answer.
Yeah, well, and, and the reason I brought it to, to the court, I did place it in executive session, but it, again, it doesn't have to be, you know, staff needs some direction, general direction from the court, because if, if for some reason the court didn't want to consider this request, it would have to be approved before the end of the year. And in order, in order for it to be approved before the end of the year, you also have to revise your, your abatement policies, okay? And with, with the year closing out pretty quick, and I don't know how many more meetings we're going to have.
We're probably going to have maybe one, maybe at the max, two more, but the point is, the court has to decide, do we want to change our abatement policy?
Right.
Okay, and I, and I as one am not ready to, to look at that yet, and we're not going to have time to look at that before the end of the year. I don't want you rushing through this, because once we do this, then we have to stand ready to do it-
Right.
-for anyone that's already here that wants, you know, that, that wants to pursue similar abatements. So, I as one would, would probably recommend that we deny the, the tax abatement at this point. We can always do it, if the court decides to change the, the policy that we have, we can do it next year, but again, we open a door to whomever.
You wouldn't be able to do it for this one.
No, no. Why? We can't do it next year for this?
Right, because what, what is being proposed to be abated is the increased value of improvements that are in place now, but haven't shown up on the appraisal district rolls until January 1st. Yeah, so, so, that's the reason why it would have to be approved before the end of this year.
Well, this, this request does not comply with current policy.
No, sir.
Okay.
And Frank, I have other questions, but there's no point in asking you, because you're the messenger. That's, that's what you are right now.
Yeah, and don't shoot me. So, shoot me.
And I'm not going to shoot you, because you don't deserve that.
I move to deny the request.
Second.
Thank you, Frank. That was a move by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo, to deny the tax abatement request for T-Mobile. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you, Frank. Item 27, approval of claims. You all okay?
Seven additions.
With the additions that are here?
Yeah.
You know, Rob, I'm probably going to ask a little bit that's a little unorthodox, but I think maybe in, in the future, when, when you're presenting claims, if you could, if you could do the court a favor and maybe circle any payment in excess of $25,000? Just so we can look at it, because there's a lot of things that are floating around that-
Highlight, I can highlight them for you.
Yeah, or highlight it for us, just so, you know, and we may ask, you know, have protocols in place, blah, 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 at least for the next few months.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions on claims? Do I hear motion to approve the claims? Moved by Commissioner Ganza, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 28, approval of-
Abstention, abstention 00192267.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, please note my two abstentions also, that I turned in my affidavits. Approval of minutes for November the 19th, 2007, November 27th, 2007, December 4th, 2007. Have the court members had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, I have.
Do I hear a motion to approve by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note my abstention on the minutes of the 19th of November and the 4th of December, I was not present. Item 29, consideration authorization of a public hearing regarding the cancellation of a portion of a subdivision plat consisting of Farm Lot 95, Lot 97, Lot 98, Lot 99, Lot 100, Lot 135, Lot 136, Lot 137, Lot 138, Park B and Park C of the Rio Hondo Park Town Site and Small Acreage Residence Garden and Orchard Lots subdivision. Do I hear motion to go into a public hearing?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in a public hearing. Abnystal?
Recommend that we close the public hearing if there is no objection to the vote.
Any member of the audience wish to address this item? Do I hear motion to close public hearing?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 30, consideration authorization to adopt an order regarding the cancellation of a portion of a subdivision plat consisting of Farm Lot 95, Lot 97, Lot 98, Lot 99, Lot 100, Lot 135, Lot 136, Lot 137, Lot 138, Park B and Park C of the Rio Hondo Park Town Site and Small Acreage Residence Garden Orchard Lots subdivision. Do I hear motion to adopt the order?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Ganza. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 31, consideration and approval of amendment to the Cameron County Computer Use, Electronic Access Policies and Procedures. Mr. Burst.
Judge, this was in reviewing the computer policy that was entered into in 2003, and as a result of having, looking at it very closely in recent litigation, I have suggested certain changes and additions. What we're dealing with here is, is how confidential information is protected. There is, there was in five, in paragraph five under that section, I have added the following wording, unless clearly identified, that confidential information should not be sent via email unless clearly identified in the email as confidential by including in the email the word, in quotes, in all caps, confidential prominently displayed, and the rest of it was already in the paragraph. The problem is, the, the rest of the provision provides, the way it reads now currently, you've got to encrypt information if you're going to send it confidential, and Cameron County doesn't have any means of encryption currently. I think it's adequate if you mark what you send as confidential when it goes out, and, and with the confidential disclaimer. That's one change. With regard to both items six and eight, the only thing that's changed is the, is the parentheticals at the end of each of those paragraphs. The way it used to read, or the way it currently reads is that, let me get to it right here. The way it currently reads is, in the, again, just the parenthetical, this provision does not apply to an official investigation by law enforcement or court order. Now, the problem with that is that it waives the, it waives the email protection. The, the paragraph itself advises employees when they come to work for the county in a combination of six and eight, that this is basically county property, that when you use our computer, it's our property, it belongs to the county, there, there goes the Commissioners' Court, and only the Commissioners' Court can give permission for the release of it with the exceptions that, that are contained, and I didn't change that, the exceptions in, in six and eight, which allows the elected official in his own department to control or to access the emails in his own department. Those speak for themselves. But the reason I changed the proviso is I feel that the only, it, it was argued that by, the, the current wording, you waived the release of those emails by the policy itself. I don't agree with that argument, but in order to, not to have to meet that argument again, I recommend that those provisions be changed where the only way access can be gained is through court order, served on the county judge. Now, they may not end up serving it on the county judge, there's not much you can do about that, but at least the only way we can, we are saying now that we will produce those is by court order, other than with consent of the Commissioners' Court. So that any email that, that is under the control of the county can be released at any time by the Commissioners' Court or by court order. Twelve and 13, there used to be one paragraph 12, and it simply said, sensitive or confidential information relating to attorney work product, attorney-client privilege, and law enforcement communications shall not be accessed without proper authorization for release by the district attorney. Now, the problem, again, that was argued, that that in advance gave, released confidential information between this court and its attorney. And in order to avoid that, what I did is I split out in 12, and I left in 12, I put very explicitly those things that are sensi-, sensitive or confidential because they're related to law enforcement communications, and any, any open record requests with regard to those would be forwarded to the district's attorney's office and would be handled by the district attorney's office under Section 552-108 of the prosecurals, prosecutorial exception, law enforcement exception to government code. And I think that's appropriate, I think the DA's office should appropriately, this is, these would be record, requests for law enforcement records that the DA is privileged not to release because it could give away prosecutorial information, and I think that only the DA should make decisions with regard to open record requests or any request for prosecutorial or law enforcement-related communications. I added 13 is simply a, a, basically a recital, it just simply says, emails or other information relating to attorney work product, attorney-client confidential or privileged information shall be protected and shall not be accessed except in strict compliance with Texas Bar Rules, including not limited to rules 1.105 and 1.12. And so, I, I recommend that approval. Are there any questions?
Any questions or discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve item 31? I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one question for, for Mr. Burst. On this emails, Richard, that we're looking at, in all the different instances that you've made changes on, what is, or is there any law pertaining to not following any one of these particular new rules that we're doing?
Well, these would just be county policy, with the exception-
I mean, besides, you know, insubordination or termination or whatever. There's no, there's no laws, right, written laws today, that in any way, shape, or form could be applied to any of this information.
No, that, that wouldn't be, that, that's not totally accurate. These are only policies, but I've referenced the laws that do apply. For instance, if you look at the last 113, it references the Texas Bar Rules, which prohibit the release, and those rules are recited in the Texas Rules of Evidence on how you protect attorney-client privilege and information. So, yes, other than just the policy, if someone sought that information, I could file, with the consent of the court, I could file a motion in, in court to quash the request for that information. Similarly, with regard to 12, for the DA's office, the exception cited therein in Section 552-108 is the law enforcement exception to the Open Informations Act that allows the DA to enforce withholding that information, so that would be more than just policy. As to the other items, they are only policy, but the argument has been made in the past that what we contained in there, that was in essence a pre-waiver of emails if, if the, if they, the law enforcement wanted to access, access the emails. And I just want to get rid of that language.
Okay.
Any further discussion? We had a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 32, consideration possible action regarding the 2007-2008 equipment list.
Judge and Commissioners laughed Wednesday. I had emailed some information, a memo, and also the, the combined list of, of all the departments. I'm not sure if you have those packets with you, or-
I don't.
I have copies. Too long.
Use my paper.
Does this include the, all the vehicles and everything we're talking about?
Two weeks ago, when we addressed the, the law enforcement vehicles, the court had decided to consider everything at the same time. This is the combined list, and the first two sheets, well, the first sheet is the bridge system, the second one is the park system, the third, Public Works, and then after that begins on page four, the general fund department.
Javier, before we start on these, why don't you bring us up to date on how much funding we have available in order to not change the payments that we currently make, that we try to keep within certain budgetary process and, for our guidelines for the annual-
On, on the last page, it's, it's actually the, the schedule of lease purchases, which shows the actual annual requirements for the current equipment that we have financed for, under Public Works and under the General Fund. The October '07 payments are the ones that we just presently made, and then the '08 is what is, is going to be due in October of next fiscal year. And at that point, I inserted those two numbers. The Public Works amount, requirement is actually increasing by $30,000 next year already, it's built into it. The General Fund, there's a slight decrease of $23,000.
That's without adding anything?
Without adding anything. Correct.
Let's go back and just kind of walk me through this. Let's just take it real slow.
Okay.
Start off with Public Works.
Okay.
Tell me that if, this is assuming that we acquire everything- Tell me that if, this is assuming that we acquire everything that's on the request list?
No, this is doing nothing.
Oh, doing nothing, well, yeah, doing nothing, our payment is going to go up.
By thirty thousand.
By thirty thousand, okay.
Right.
The same thing with general fund. If we do nothing, it's still going to go up.
It's going to decrease.
Or it's going to go down by how much?
By twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, so we can spend...
Sixty thousand dollars approximately.
Basically, in general fund equipment, correct?
And you maintain the same.
Because I think that, as we know, we're in all likelihood going to have to fund the two courts. One for sure, and maybe depending on the way the, our litigation goes, but let's assume that we're going to have to fund two courts, and that's going to be, let's say, a little over a million dollars that we're going to have to absorb into the general fund somehow. So, if we decide to buy anything from general fund, where is that breakdown if we spend two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand? Do you have this in your list?
What I have here, and I guess it can be taken from some of the departments, Commissioner Garza had requested a breakdown as to, on each item, how much it would cost to finance that, and they have that, and this is on the assumption of, you know, doing this at three years, speaking in reference to...
What page are you on, Javier?
Well, they all have it, say, on the bridge system, it's on a per item, on page one.
That's what it costs to finance that item.
The far-right columns have that, based on three-year term at approximately, at a five percent interest.
Okay, let's go to the bridge system. How much in the bridge system, because we're talking a hundred and forty thou, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in excess per year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, in the bridge system, what is it in here that is absolutely necessary that we have to do in order to continue our operations effectively and efficiently? If you tell me all, Pete...
No, I mean, we've been putting off an upgrade for the last three, four years, so...
So, that's what I'm saying, is an upgrade something that we absolutely have to do, or can we defer that for...
No, on the bridge system, we can defer till next year. If we go to parks, on the list that we have for parks, what we absolutely do need is the two pickup trucks for the park rangers. That I would recommend that we go ahead and purchase.
Like fifteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
Under Public Works or Road and Bridge...
Okay, hold on, can we, is that, okay, on the bridge system, we can defer all of that?
That's correct.
All that amount, okay?
Yes.
And it's not going to hinder operations or anything? We're going to be fine, okay? The park system, what you're saying, what we absolutely need are the two pickups, which will cost almost a little over fifteen, about fifteen thousand dollars per year for the next three years...
Right.
...to pay, correct? And you can absorb that into the park system budget without any problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the Road and Bridge, this year, we're supposed to get three units, or I believe two units for the building inspectors, and I believe when we went out for bids, the specs that we had called for, those vehicles were discontinued, I think the Ford Rangers or the Rangers. So I would, you know, I know that we've got three pickups there, but if we can get two, you know, that would help that operation. And so that would be about four thousand dollars a year.
You know, because we just heard a report on item number six about housing and the appraised values are going down and all this good stuff, and I'm just concerned that we start spending some of this money, the appraised values aren't going to come in as what we've been used to in the past.
My more concern is going to be the decrease we're going to be seeing, I think, in bridge crossing revenues.
Exactly.
Because we're going to start having, you know, we're already seeing a decrease in it now.
That's right.
And I think it's going to get worse starting January and then certainly next June when they...
Before it gets better.
Asports.
So then, on Road and Bridge, you're saying four thousand dollars could buy you two trucks for the planning?
Yes.
And the rest of the stuff?
We can hold off till the following year.
Okay, what, do you all want to do that? Because the more we spend here, the less y'all are going to have in road materials.
No.
Yeah, Road and Bridge, yeah.
Well, it's four thousand dollars.
No, no.
Yes.
Okay, you're saying, okay, are you, I misunderstood. I thought that you needed everything with the exception of that one extra truck, or all you need is the two trucks?
No, we're saying if we're in the mood of holding off till next fiscal year, what we absolutely need is those two pickups.
Okay, you want to hold off on everything with the exception of the two pickups?
Right.
All right, and which, okay, and that adds another fifteen thousand.
How many pickups, pickups?
Two.
In Road and Bridge?
Picks up, two. And you're saying four thousand will buy you both?
That's approximately the bid price.
Or five thousand.
And this is for Public Works, Pete?
Or Road and Bridge?
Building, for building permits.
Oh, okay.
Planning.
Now, under the general fund...
Okay, so let me, are we through with Public Works?
Yes.
Okay, so the only way we're doing Public Works is the two, the two pickup trucks?
Right.
Correct? Okay, and that's going to cost?
Approximately four thousand a year.
Per truck or total?
Total.
Total, all right.
That's pretty cheap.
Are you sure?
Well, they're financed over three years. The compact pickup trucks, the compact pickup trucks that we've been bidding out over the past couple of years, have been coming in around thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars.
Six thousand.
No, but it's going to be like seven thousand, but okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, seven thousand. Okay, now, now let's go to the big one, the general fund. And now, this one, we're starting off with nothing, so whatever we add here is what we're going to have to add to next year's budget.
Well, the general fund, I think, next year, it's twenty-three thousand dollars less in the debt service payment.
So we have sixty thousand to spend.
Sixty thousand dollars to add to it.
Okay.
And the request is for three million, three point one million.
Right.
A small part.
And I think...
What are must-haves?
I think when you look at the computer center, and I believe that's page four, the email server with the software licenses, I mean, that we absolutely need.
Which one, which? Okay.
Eighty thousand?
Right. The department servers, I believe I requested six, I think we can, we need two absolutely.
Which one is that?
Department servers.
Right under that, right under the email.
Oh, department servers, okay. How many of those?
Two.
Of the six requested?
Right. The port switches, the Cisco forty-eight and the Cisco twenty-four...
Hold on, Pete, can you keep like a little running balance of what this is? You doing that?
Yes.
Just so we know.
The two, the Cisco forty-eight and the Cisco twenty-four, I'm being told those we absolutely need.
All of them?
And then the hard disk addition at the end of the list, and that's about two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Okay, so we're still, the computer department alone is about a hundred grand?
A year?
Yeah.
A year.
Yes, is that correct?
More or less, roughly. So we're seventy-five thousand.
So we're already seventy-five thousand in the hole.
Yeah. The sheriff department, and again, to...
What page is that on?
Seven.
To comply with the state law, the digital video recorders, I think that's, that's an item we need to look at very closely and...
Are you back, are you on page eight?
Page seven. Digital video recorders.
Digital video recorders, server and salvation.
Right.
But I guess the question is, is that a must need?
I think we need them to be...
What do counties do that don't supply that? I mean, do they go to jail?
Yeah, that I...
I mean, look, if we approve that, we're already at...
Two hundred and thirty thousand above.
Pete, you going to come up with some way to pay for these? Or...
I know we've looked at the possibility of getting grant monies, but I don't think we've been successful. You know, we can continue to try and do that and...
Well, not just these, but everything you're talking about that we really need to get this year. Any thoughts?
How about the vehicles for the sheriff?
Again, I think at the last meeting, you know, you all got a list of the vehicles, some of those vehicles, I believe, were pushing a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand miles.
I think we also asked Lee to look, I think they're asking for fifteen vehicles...
Yes.
...to look at the, you know, to keep the best seven, if there is such a thing, and look at the worst seven, and maybe look into replacing those seven. And then next year, or the year after, look at replacing, you know, whatever, you know... Look, the, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of need, and we're not going to have a lot of accounting creation here, you know, but there's a lot of need out there, but the money's just not there to do everything that we need to do. So this court's going to have to decide where we're going to prioritize and put these dollars in. You know, we have some one-shot monies that are going to come in, fine, we have one-shot monies, but that's a one-shot deal, it's gone. But we're still encumbered the following fiscal year. And again, I'm concerned that we are going to have to pony up a million dollars for these two courts. And that's a million dollars that we're going to decide, we're either going to raise the tax rate by half a penny, or not give employee salary increases, or do something. That's why we have to be, I want to be very, very cautious before we start spending all this money in equipment, that it's easy to do it now, but we're going to get hit next budget year. So, we need to know what the actual need, something they just cannot live without. Now, I would support half of the, half of the sheriff's vehicles this year, look at the worst ones and just kind of, you know, kind of bailing wire and whatever is there to keep them together until we can afford to do something else. I think we ought to have a moratorium on any other vehicles that are unnecessary for all the other law enforcement agencies. I know that some law enforcement agencies said, indicated they had some money in their, in their drug forfeiture funds, and if they want to spend the money, you know, in that, that's fine as well, but we have a lot of money here that we're being asked to spend, and we just don't have that kind of, that kind of money unless you guys have some creativeness out there. See, the three are huddling there.
Well, Pete, there was a presentation, I think, made to you and to Mike Forbes by one of the auto dealerships here about how we might acquire vehicles at a less cost. Did that ever go anywhere?
I wasn't able to...
I wasn't in it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend it, but the explanation provided to me, it's somewhat of a lease, it's a lease purchase, but in essence, it's what we're doing now. We're not buying the vehicles outright, we're leasing them over, or paying for them over three years, and we've been doing this at least for nine, ten years. I know there was at one point where there was an amount set aside, and they purchased so many vehicles, but since the fleet has grown, or equipment in general, the decision was made to start financing this equipment over three years or five years, depending what it is. So we're in essence already doing that, what they were proposing, just in a different manner. It was a lease, is what it was.
Well, I wasn't sure, I'd not heard it, but I just heard about it.
We have been notified that we are going to receive SCAP funds, I believe it's a little over, a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know if the court wants us to come back with a list that, you know, maybe we can utilize that three hundred thousand dollars as the first payment of the three payments, you know, next fiscal year, and bring back a list, you know, and see what we can purchase based on three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, but then, all you're doing is just deferring for one year, we're still going to have the same problem in two years from now. I mean, if that's what the court wants to do, that's fine, but I think that you're walking on financially dangerous ground there. But let me go back to what I think we can do with it.
We probably already spent those three hundred thousand, is what we're talking about.
Yes.
Also, one of the issues that I have, I think I'd like to ask about, is, for example, Constable Precinct Five is asking for two sets of body armor, and the sheriff's department is looking for twenty-five sets of bulletproof vests. Now, I realize that these things have actually a dating on them to where they're no longer certified because they're too old. Are we in that situation with these? If we are, I personally think we need to purchase them.
On the, when we...
I agree.
I think on the, let's go on the sheriff, I think that the, let's just, I hate to assume, but let's assume that the twenty-five vests are being replacement vest or added vest. I would support the vest. What is the wall banger for the SWAT? What's a wall banger? Is that one of those?
Banger, wall banger.
Is that those big, big things? Okay.
Two of them right here.
Okay. On the protic helmet, on the twelve of those, is that also for the SWAT team?
Yes.
I assume, okay.
Is there somebody here?
There, right there.
Well, they're high, they're back in the back. And I assume on the, on the, on the seven vehicles, we're talking about, are we going to be able to transfer any of the, any of the equipment that's on the old vehicles to the new vehicles, the light bar, the console, things of that nature? Lee?
Most of it, yes.
Okay.
Give it to a regular patrol car.
Okay, so, I guess what we can do is, you look at each one, if they're, if they're in good shape, put them into the new vehicles, if they need to be replaced, well, then let us know.
Okay.
Which I agree with you, I think that the bulletproof vest, those we have to buy?
Do, for the bulletproof vests...
Very bottom.
Oh, yeah, okay, the twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
As long as they're replacing vests that are going out of date.
And is that, is that what y'all are doing?
Those will be expiring in a few years.
Okay.
So they're replacing?
Yeah.
They will be expiring.
Okay, the...
The helmets, is it the same type of thing, Mr. Rainin?
The helmets, those are to, Danny's from the SWAT teams here, those are to replace the helmets that our SWAT team uses at this time.
Okay. Is also due to expiration or?
They're old military helmet helmets.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, that needs to happen.
The seven vehicles, we're only, is that all right? Agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, so for the sheriff's office, let's do the seven vehicles, and Lee, you're going to, where did you go, rely on you to do, you know, I mean, we're stretching it as it is here, we're already past the three hundred thousand dollars here. The seven vehicles, the helmets, and the bulletproof vests, how urgent are these wall bangers?
Can we wait?
Is that something that you, that you...
Well, the wall banger, it's a...
And what are you doing now to tear down or break down walls?
Well, this is a device that allows for the SWAT team members to, it's called a diversionary device, it's a flashbang, as you might call it. It's just a diversionary device that's dropped inside a place that we're going to target before we go in there and raid it. This will give the officer, it's an extension to give the officer a safer dropping zone to drop off that diversionary device before it goes off. And it also, what that does also, you put one of those flashbangs on the end of it, and you apply it next to a door, and when it goes off, it also pops the door open and gives the officer a safer...
Okay, that's fine, we got it. We'll go ahead and add that to the, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay.
On the, was a, you know, the, where was the other, body armor?
On Constable Precinct Five, he has two body armors.
Is that replacement to date in or what?
To go to the page eight, the very top, jail system, they're requesting two vans, but I think we can, with one van, we can provide for next year.
Okay, let's just do one van. Okay, let's talk about juvenile probation. If y'all have, if y'all have had the opportunity to visit the juvenile probation, they are without a camera system, basically. The camera system that they have doesn't function, you can hardly make out what, you know, what's there. I would, you may want to get with Tommy Tomitas, but see if that's what he's talking about, is that what he's talking about to do that? That's something that, I mean, we really need to find the resources to do that. That camera system has been out for quite some, I think they had some electrical problems and...
Didn't we replace something?
No, I don't know, I don't...
Yeah, we replaced, didn't we replace something like two months ago?
We were doing the jail, the jail had an issue.
Okay, but not the, not the...
Not doing it.
Okay. That's something that they, I mean, I was there last week, and that is something that they absolutely have to have. I mean, they just don't, the camera system that they have right now does not work, you can't make out, you know, maybe I think one, one little slide, you can make out what it is, but the rest of it, you just cannot... it is, but the rest of it, you just cannot. So we really need to try to find the resources for that.
Well, that's the same reason that the sheriff needs a digital video recorder.
Yeah, but that's three hundred grand, there's only thirty-two thousand.
And is that needed to pass inspection or meet?
Yeah, they, they got some other issues, I mean-
So do, don't we have to do that? I mean-
Well, they, they've been asking for this for quite some time, and it's, that, that becomes more of a safety issue for the, for the probation officers and people that are involved there. The, the digital, I don't know if it's, if it's coupled with safety, or just having adequate documentation for-
Documentation.
For that, but, but if we can, I mean, if the court can, we really need to look at, at, at that camera system for the boot camp, that'd be the only thing that I think we can do for them at this point.
So of all the cars that the constables have, have requested, there's no way that we could at least give each one of them one?
I've, well, I've gotten calls from some of the constables, and they said, you know what, if, if we can't do it, we can't do it, we can wait a year. One constable said that, that he would be able to assist us with drug forfeiture monies, but for the most, for the most part, if you start giving to one, you gotta give to all, you know, and that's, that's my, I mean, we're running out of space here in terms of money.
How about all the other departments on the bottom of page eight?
Well, I'm looking at them, I mean, it's not how much, how much we wanna do.
Where are we now, Javier?
Well, um, the video recording system, is that included or not included at this point?
Not, not included at this point.
Not included at this point. Um, and you want to include the video system for juvenile?
Yes.
Camera system.
Cameras. Well, you know what? Let's verify that that camera system they're talking about is for the inside of the juvenile probation building, and not just the boot camp.
Okay.
This one says boot camp, just kinda, just kinda verify with them.
Okay.
If, if that's the cameras in, in the, in their main building.
For the detention and-
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, if-
I think, I think it is. I, I think we're okay with it, just verify with, with Tina. Or Tommy.
We're about, in payment, it's about two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars.
So far?
So, including the sheriff's cars?
Doing seven.
Doing seven.
Seven.
So you're already at two hundred grand.
Yeah, but you didn't include the computer center.
Well, if, if you notice on the, let me go back, the computer center, let me go back to it. Because the sheriff's department was sixty-seven thou, approximately sixty-seven thousand for a vehicle.
It's gotta be more than that, because the computer center alone's about a hundred.
It's approximately a hundred thousand.
Right.
And payment.
Right.
Annual payment.
Which that kinda eats up to three hundred.
Yeah. Yeah, the computer center alone is about a hundred thousand dollars, annual payment.
All right, so we're there.
All we have, well, this is, this is what I have, is the computer center list, and then we have the seven vehicles, the twelve helmets, the twenty-five bulletproof vests, um, are we doing the-
The wall banger.
The wall banger? Sixty-eight thousand.
Two of them.
Yes, okay. Okay. So it's one sixty-eight, and then plus the thirty-
How about the park department? Don't you have two pickups there?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, but that's the park, this is just general fund.
Yeah, two hundred.
Oh, okay.
So we're at two hundred.
How much?
Two hundred.
In debt service payments.
Debt service payments, not in-
In, in new, in new payments.
Right.
In new payments.
New payments.
And we have thirty-
Yes.
-available to be, to keep the same from last year.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
Then we're in good shape there.
That's it.
I bet.
I think so. But just give us some, some finer numbers, once, I know you're kind of adding back and forth.
Yes.
Give us some final numbers on that, and if you can find some other sources that we can do this from, you know, you know, bring it back to us.
Okay.
But for now, I think this is something that, at a minimum, we, we gotta do.
Uh, Mr. Reyna, I know Javier's still here?
No, he just left.
He just left?
He just lost fifty grand.
Well, my only concern was that, and, and, you know, our constables are also law enforcement, and if at all possible, I would, would have liked for them to at least get one of the vehicles that they were requesting. Now, I don't know which one of them may have said that they didn't, they could do without, but-
It was Constable from Harlingen said he could do without, and-
San Benito.
And San Benito said he could do without. Constable Gomez said he could try to help out with, with drug forfeiture funds. Yeah, and, you know, you have to work with that on the, you know, you told me that you got some money the other day for drug forfeiture, so I think we can, I think we can do that.
Okay, you got your list?
Well, yeah, but you know, the only reason that we're replacing the seven of the sheriff is because they've, they've got a hundred-and-fifty thousand miles on them. Now, you don't see what I drive now, of course.
And, and it has no life, it has nothing.
Twenty-year-old car? Yeah, he drives a twenty-year-old car, I drive a thirteen-year-old-
Well, if it's better than my unit, maybe he can swap with me.
I'll swap with you.
I don't wanna swap, I don't wanna swap minutes.
I think one is a definite we needed to swap, and the other one, I was willing to find maybe some forfeiture funds to, to help out if possible on the pickup issue, but the vehicle definitely I needed replaced.
Yeah, but, you know, here we go, I mean, you can justify it, and then I've got Constable Bodias to justify it, then Constable Diaz to follow, so we're back to where we were, trying to buy all these vehicles for constables, I mean, and we're back to where we were, we're already at two-hundred thousand plus, and so we're gonna have to add another fifty thousand dollars.
This particular vehicle is a vehicle that I got from another department, because my vehicles were so old, they broke down, I replaced it with another used vehicle, it broke down, and the expenses were just so high that it was, it was not worth repairing it. So now I'm stuck with a third vehicle that's in really poor shape, and, I mean, I'll do what the court decides.
So why don't we do this, why don't you come back, I guess, send us all, you know, the real numbers that you've got? You know, maybe y'all three get with Javier, and just tell, I mean, give us the minimum what you need, I mean, don't, you know, we're, I don't think we're gonna trade the four-by-fours like we wanted, but-
I understand that.
Okay, and so-
Judge, I excluded everything. I didn't ask for anything, because you told me in the last meeting there was no money.
Well, there's not, I mean-
But I was expecting, I was expecting to get the one vehicle that everybody said was okay.
Well, let me tell you, there, there is no money. I mean, we're just being told that we're gonna have to add two-hundred thousand dollars already to next year's budget and payment, so we don't have money left over, so this is all brand-new money, and, and I guess everyone's gonna, everyone's getting penalized for what we're gonna have to do with these courts, a million dollars plus. So if that, if it was just your deal, fine, but we got one-point-two million that we're gonna have to come up with in the next budget to fund these two courts, plus all this stuff, plus whatever it is, so bring us the actual numbers, what we've talked about today, get with the constables, and, and look at what they've got, and if we, if we can do it, bring it back to us and see if we can keep it under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, let's see if we can work around those lines.
Well, maybe that'll give us time to regroup and see what we can do without.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, really, really, I wanna thank y'all for, you know, for working with us on this stuff, because it is, it is tough, and everything's getting more and more expensive, so if y'all can do that, that would be great, if you could help us out with that.
Then we'll guess at it for next week.
Or do it tomorrow, or next week, because we're trying to keep next week's meeting kinda short, because we're gonna be giving up, you know, a little pen.
How soon can we address this?
Uh-
Javier?
First meeting in January? Or se, or second meeting in January?